Good afternoon, Gary Stokes, I am still president of the board. And we have visitors in and around that are other than those who are regulars? No, all right then, but we will start with the one. All Spokane Public Library buildings surround the traditional homeland of the four bands of the Spokane tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Shewaile Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and merging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of Spokane tribe into all those who share this land. Okay. The agenda, if anybody, if you had a chance to take a look at it, anything new, any changes? Going once, going twice, all right? Thank you. I would like to ask for a motion of approval of the four minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Second, all in favor, say aye. We also need approval of the August twenty twenty-four bills and contributions. Page two of one million fifty-one thousand three hundred. Thank you very much, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. I found, turn to the board.
Thank you, good evening to everyone. Alright, so to start out with the library operations. For August twenty twenty-four, our cash and investments trend. As of August close, we are now able to pay one hundred and twenty-three days worth of operating costs. Just a reminder, we do have our second and final levy-licent allocation that we will receive in November. That's on the way as well. For the August expenditure trend. So as of August, we have spent and dedicated sixty-five percent of our expenditure budget so far this year. The August operating expenses were nine hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Of that amount, seven hundred sixty-two thousand eight eighty-seven was for personnel. We also had seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three that was spent on capital books and materials. Thirty-two thousand six ninety-three for utilities. Twenty-eight thousand thirteen was charged for annual HVAC web control access and monitoring, as well as seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-one, which is an annual charge, or sorry, our quarterly charge for our HVAC chiller maintenance. We spent eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars on our third-party security costs. That's mainly for, that is mainly for Liberty Park Hive and Shadle. Just a small map at central. And then for interfund charges, it was nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Any question on operations? So for the bond plan update expenditures for the month of August, total of fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. The Nevada site is in the process of adding some modifications to secure the sewer line, that's now done. It did set construction back just slightly, but we have been reassured that they are still on track to meet the year-end deadline. Also in August, we did receive two letters of approval to be leased for drainage for the Indian Trail Landscaping Project. The letters we received were from the Washington Employment Security Department and the Washington Department of Labor and Industries. We're currently still waiting on the third and final letter, which is from the Decarment Department. And then here's a quick snapshot of all of our projects and what our remaining balance is at the August close. With about the one million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and one. Any questions on bond?
How many open projects do we still have that like created, we've seen a few.
I can bring that next month and be for sitting. Those are open, right, public works, yeah. So for business office updates, we have begun the annual inventory process for twenty twenty-four. The city accounting department did send us their inventory list in mid-September. So our senior accountant, Minnie Quong, she oversees this process with some of my assistants. Most of the assistance does come from our staff members. So CXM with branches and then people, different people like programming. Our R and T department is another huge one, facilities is a huge one, so it takes a lot of cooperation to get everything inventoried by the deadline, which is going to be early December for city this year. And then for a budget twenty twenty-five update. So last week I did attend the mayor's budget meeting. Just a couple highlights from that. So the deficit they were originally looking at was twenty-five million. They've now been able to find some savings and they're looking at ten point nine million. It's going to be their projected deficit. Some of the new things that they found is that Mayor's Cabinet does plan to do a cost of living adjustment freeze for the first six months of twenty twenty-five. It also has some reductions in temps season, all those are some examples of savings that they're looking at. Voters do approve the ballot measure in November. There will be a sunset community safety fund established. That's going to have a tenure cap on it. The reason for that is to improve the transparency to the public, to ensure that those funds are spent on what they're intended for. Over that ten-year sales tax window, they are estimating to be about sixty-nine million. So one thing that I got at that meeting that pertains to the library. We don't have any solid answers at this point in time. There was a little shout-out where they were not going to be reducing the public safety departments. And the shout-out we received was that we do have a public safety component. So they're kind of, you know, nodding to us where we might have some better in next month. So, but nothing, nothing inconcrable. Any questions?
When will they give you the actual numbers?
I think after the vote comes. It could be January.
They'll have to vote on it. But second. But if it's a close vote, then they're going to allow it for certification of the results, so.
They might even find more things and not have anything solidified. They'll be pushing for it, so council has to vote early December to adopt. Oh, that's just supplemental to my report. But you can look at it very.
Questions, comments? Do you need a motion for this or is it?
Alright. Highlights from my report. Been focusing a lot on internal surveys to get a sense of from staff on our efforts around our last strategic planning effort. And that's going to help serve as our foundational document as we move forward with public feedback. We'll be engaging again with staff at this week's staff day. So not only celebrating our staff and doing some learning, but also turning to that strategic focus for looking at twenty thirty for what we're doing. So we are really looking forward to that day. I said in my report that I moderated an online panel discussion for Library Journal because I have the dates wrong, that actually happens. But that would be on various strategies for library modernizations. So. Also met with Avista to touch base on how our organizations might partner in the future. It looks like they'll be taking a bigger role in economic development efforts in the city. And they're interested to partner with us, I think, on startups looking at some capacity. Whether that's through funding or what, I don't know at this point, it's just early conversations. Jason's team successfully put on tacos and tequila. This is the official Latino festival in Spokane. If this is any gauge of how successful a program, I got a text from a teenager. They are related to me and they said it was awesome. And I never get that feedback from them, so good job, Jason. That seemed to go really well. I hope, I hope that next year that we do not have to go through the closing down of Spokane Falls Boulevard conversation with the city. Again, because we proved that we can do this. And also prove that public will show up and they will support their community. So hopefully, that's something that we can effortlessly make happen as far as the street culture goes next year. Our star spotlight for August actually went to Amy Bircham, who's in our audience right there. Since Hilliard is unique in that it's a partnership joint site with the schools, they do carting a little bit differently. So that's usually on the past couple of years, it's been on Labor Day, so Amy took time on vacation, we could come in and really make things happen. I think she got to boss Marcia around a little bit too, so that's always a plus.
We're all for certain.
Yeah. So thank you for doing that, Amy, it's, it looks great. In August, we also held part three of our four-part all-staff training series on stress and harm reduction, that seemed to go well. We continue to serve extended hours as a cooling center option for the city. Really, you know, kudos to the staff because sometimes it's the day before their call and cares are organizing with Derek, our security manager. You know, getting the schedules and we don't have infinite time, but we keep making it happen. City. City also coordinated parking lot repair work for Shadle Park and South Hill, so that's been happening over the past few weeks. Nothing major, just sort of a crack and seal of repair. Nicole had mentioned that we continue along their budget discussions with the mayor's administration and city council, will more hopefully over November. And I did have a nice one-on-one with the mayor. One of the things that we did talk about was strategic planning efforts for the city. This is something that I have been pushing for for the past five years. The city has not had a strategic plan and I'm excited to say that. So I'll actually be serving on the planning committee for that effort for the city. So I'm excited to take part in that. Any questions for me?
Is part of your conversation with Avista also about, they have a pretty rich community resource program, is that, okay.
Yep, yep. We've had conversations with them before, we thought we were really closing them.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're reinvited.
I watched so many discussions last week. And it was interesting to watch, but more importantly, it was really interesting to see the amount of collegiality. Considering everyone having to be very careful about their own budgets, but also being willing to chop a little here, chop a little there. I hope that continues.
Yeah, it seems to be that team building pays off. Matt Heard, you tend to come to the table with a good drink. Things are in the right, going in the right direction.
Thank you, thanks for the question. Paul, are you there?
I am. Thank you so much for having me. Give a council update. Thank you for the excellent budget summary. I wasn't quite sure if I could hear that council kind of deadline for approval, but we would be scheduled to approve the budget December second. So December second is the date. I do think the kind of monthly shared study sessions that we've had around the budget have been really productive. It's been wonderful to have Andrew there as we kind of guide these along. And quite frankly, it's been pretty collaborative and transparent, which I think bodes well for some of the decisions that are coming up as we shape the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five budget. And I'm definitely, you know, going out to all the different constituencies and trying to shape a lot of those budget priorities. But I think there's certainly some common themes emerging from council members. So just a couple items I want to highlight. You know, it's been kind of a funky council meeting schedule just with Labor Day. And then last night we had our neighborhood council town hall, our third of the year where we really keep a light legislative meeting. But some of the big items was an award from the state through the healthcare authority to expand the street medicine model for CHAZ. So that's one million dollars and that allows them to expand their hours into the evenings and weekends before they were really operating more kind of Tuesday through Saturday and missing some of the high volume for calls. So, you know, the street medicine program really does help meet folks where they're at. Helps provide referrals for treatment and housing. I think one of the biggest items was we approved Kevin Hall as our new police chief. So he's on his third week on the job. We're not expecting him to solve all the problems yet, but he's definitely been onboarding, jumping in. We approved the new Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board. So this is going to advise the city on a lot of our kind of extreme weather response patterns. You know, obviously there's a connection here with the libraries. Libraries have been really integral to cooling centers and help, helping people in need when we have faced extreme, extreme weather. And then we had a, oh gosh, what was it, the passed some more ARPA funds, got the contracts for those out the door for school-based clinics. So we're looking at a school-based health clinic at either Ferris High School or Lewis and Clark. And then last night, yeah, a light agenda just with the kind of neighborhood council forum. But we did approve the contract for downtown cleanup. So this is a two-year contract that's going to focus on a lot of graffiti vandalism, street cleaning for five hundred thousand dollars in the downtown core in partnership with the downtown Spokane partnership as well as a housing study as we look to convert commercial spaces to residential and alleyway activation. We do have some amazing alleyways downtown. We've seen in other cities, you know, the possibility of what happens when you open those up more to different restaurants and businesses. I will say, just to follow up on Andrew's point about tacos and tequila. Amazing event, so cool to see the turnout. People were blown away by, I think, how the library was accessible as an entry point and using that as basically the north end is a patio and able to watch the stage. So that kind of downtown street activation and getting more people, you know, out and about is just so key, I think, to a lot of our challenges that we do face downtown. And again, the library was just an amazing partner and it was great to see the Hispanic Business Association really kind of flourish in this new, you know, first time doing this. And I think there's a lot of lessons learned. And thank you to everyone who participated in the survey for Spokane Falls Boulevard as we're looking to kind of reshape the design for that. And you know, what the future of the Boulevard will look like. We got about thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred responses, so that's pretty high for this kind of survey. And I think bodes well for the engagement of looking at Spokane Falls Boulevard. That's what we got.
People seem to forget that it was closed for a while and we got along just fine.
Yeah, it's true. Well, I did like how specifically with tacos and tequila, there was, you know, for people exiting River Park Square, they were able to turn up Lincoln and you had that kind of direction. But yeah, just what a, what an eye-opener, I think, and using the, you know, Plaza of Truths. And it was just a really nice, I think, intersection of a lot of engagement and it was a huge success, so just amazing work.
Well, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Amanda.
Hi. So we had a really successful month for email marketing. We sent a back-to-school email, we sent a couple of very good, simple emails, but one email, our back-to-school email had a thirty-five percent read rate with a six-point-four percent click rate. That resulted in a bump of ten thousand hits to our website. So this was a really cool example of why email marketing is so important for us. We're actually presenting at another national webinar conference next month on this topic of using your email list to your advantage. And we're going to be able to use this very recent example of the impact of email on our web traffic and engagement with the library. You can see our most visited web pages for this past month were as a direct result of that email. They were back-to-school time blog and A is for Apple party, all of those, and get ready for kindergarten. All three of those were top stories in that email that went out that day. So people were clicking, not just on one story, but multiple stories in that email and driving that traffic to the website. Plus, you know, we were also promoting these really important services that we're offering the community around kindergarten readiness and back-to-school. So we also have been partnering with the city in promoting the kindergarten readiness series. So if you recall, I think last month we mentioned that our preschool story time has now transitioned, been rebranded into kindergarten readiness. And that directly supports efforts of the city and the schools in upgrading our kindergarten readiness in our community. And people are engaging with that content and coming to the events and so, and success all around. We're running a number of print ads right now, which is kind of different for us because we don't do a lot of print ads, but it just kind of happened. Annual manual is a really good one for us because it has a longer shelf life. We also get some free ads with some of our partners like the Family Guide, Trending Northwest gave us a free ad in their next issue. And the Parks and Activities Guide, so you'll see kind of the campaign that we're running right now, ten things to love about the library and that consistent ad style in all of those places, but see them in different places, you'll recognize that and start to do that message across all of those. We're also, we had a really great meeting with Spokane Public Schools about their Engage in Real Life platform that they're building. So in in conjunction with their effort to get devices out of the classroom, you know, they've done an all-school ban on devices. In addition to that, trying to find more activities where kids do outside of school so that they're not just going home and being on their devices alone, that they're going out and being with friends out in the world. And so we see the library is a really good partner for that, for people to come to free library events. And so we're just been brainstorming and working with them on how we can help use the Engage in Real Life platform to also promote live free library programs. And we see a lot of possibility there, so expect to hear more from us and the schools about that in the future. And then at the bottom here, I just have a couple of last pictures from our summer events. We had a music camp with Andy Brumby there on the left and our faith Olympic there on the right, doing some kids doing some crafts. So just kind of last, last pictures of summer programming before we move into the fall. Any questions for me?
I've got a couple. I promise this will be easy. Most red blogs.
Yep.
Getting ready for kindergarten. And then of course tacos and tequila, which I have now heard this more often than the last couple of weeks and I've heard in the last couple of years. So, which is good. So let's start with the getting ready for kindergarten. Because I have any number of friends who are dealing with this and they're finding us, so tell me more.
Yeah, so getting ready for kindergarten, the blog in particular outlines a number of different resources that we offer. Everything from our online resources to our in-person story times that people can come to. And so the blog really just covers everything that you can do at the library to get ready for kindergarten. Another piece of get ready for kindergarten that's not listed here is our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten Program. Another component of that where kids can get a little checklist and they can mark off when they read a thousand books, they can come in and get a special prize. That's also included on that blog as an overview of things.
Okay. And then tacos and tequila, I know that you have been chiefly responsible for getting the word out, so what sources did you use?
It was social media and our email newsletter. So both of those, the benefit of the social media is our partners in tacos and tequila could also share that, that broadens that message. But also the email reaches one hundred and sixty thousand people each time we send it out. A percentage of one hundred and sixty thousand people, it goes to one hundred and sixty thousand inboxes. And, you know, that obviously we've really seen is a great way to feature.
I pulled up the blog for you in case you want to see.
Thank you.
Here it is.
Countdown story time. I want the t-shirt. I really like the idea of Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. That's one of those that when I was growing up, in order for me to actually get one book at my local library, I had to go with a parent. And it's kind of nice to see things now where there are all sorts of options and opportunities, so thank you for what you do. Alright, stop tearing up now. Okay, Jason.
So did you guys hear about this thing called tacos? What happened? There were a conservative estimate of attendance, which there's no way to get exactly how many people were there, but based on wristbands that were sold for beer gardens, booth that was sold there, it's around seven thousand people coming through. Slasher, four thousand, so it's an increase. Which is the highest attended program we've ever had at the library by far. I think it's three thousand more than the previous highest attended program. But it was really successful, it was far more, a far smoother event this year, other than the the permitting and street closures and all that, that wasn't smooth. And I don't share your optimism. But having done it before in this space, our partners really knew what they were doing. Working with Derek, who, his guards and additional security from CMS really made everything go a lot more smoothly. I didn't have to be there for thirty-seven hours over two days this year like I did last year, it was great. I got to leave in the middle of the thing and come back later, so it went really well. But again, yeah, that's our highest program and it's also the highest impact score program compared. At a ninety-six point six seven, comparing that to our average for the month of nineteen point three one for older programs, it's it's pretty crazy. If you look at the chart for adult on there, you have to see one. It kind of ruins the stats for the month because it stretches everything out, but it's pretty cool to see that one. But it's pretty cool to see that one big impactful program. Um, other programs that were great this month, uh, Pet a Truck always brings in a lot of people, two hundred and fifty people showed up for that. We had a cow that run five hundred and nineteen people, Cedar the Highland Cow over to events for part of summer reading. Um, we hosted uh, Thrive at a panel on their visit to the international border that they hosted upstairs at the uh, on the third floor of the library. Like I said, yeah, our highest attendance for a month that I can find in any of the stats for this month was ten thousand six hundred and fifty eight people came to library events. Obviously, a chunk of that's for talking to tequila. And our highest impact scores under the new scoring system as well. So it was a pretty successful month of August. And you can expect some lower numbers in September, some readings done, and if you don't have any massive events outside. But it does show that that space could be used if you find the right partners to bring in. I'm hoping to keep searching out those types of events to be out on Spokane Falls Boulevard Plaza. And questions?
Do you guys think about partnering with like the events that are already downtown and inviting them to expand into that? Like, can you add on the park? Have you had some um, different like?
Yeah, definitely. I know we, I really want to steal some events and move it there.
Yeah.
Have this RV there.
Expand, yeah.
It's always tricky with that space, but I'm hoping that it's getting less tricky. I think the traffic worked fine this year.
I guess that the roadblock is the literal roadblock.
Yeah, last year, Bull Street Bridge was closed, so that added some complications that people couldn't exit or go there. So this year, I already got goods off that way.
Yeah.
So hopefully that everybody sees that it works and you don't have to get about it every year at emergency meetings.
Or legislating.
Yes. That is, there's talk of that. Okay.
Jason, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, under new business, back to you. I'm gonna invite Sam to speak.
Um, hello.
Bye.
So uh, as Andrew mentioned this year, or we just completed our third of four sessions of the Strays and Calm Education Program. So I wrote in here that we completed four, but we will complete four by the end of the year. Um, our next one is on November first. So the goal heading into twenty twenty five is to continue these learning opportunities for staff. And request that the library bridges open late on four Fridays in twenty twenty five as well to accommodate those trainings. Uh, this year, we had a pretty structured program through step. Um, we don't have anything on the books for twenty twenty five, but we want to keep the ball rolling and have it on in person. Um, team building and training opportunities for the staff. So the tentative schedule would stay the same. Um, normally we open at ten AM on Fridays and we would open at one, still closing at five. So just requesting for those for to be determined dates for twenty twenty five.
Do you guys give us any feedback when they are closed? Like, do people actually say anything? A lot, but also we haven't gotten.
I've got baby two months.
Yeah. I feel like they're such a great job communicating that they're going, they're going to be these closures. I mean, okay, that was my.
And it would, you know, I think it was over, I think it was the year that by our policy we were closed three days or just because how they laid on the weekend. So we got a it wasn't.
Yeah.
Well, I think the training and staff involvement is really critical work that needs to be done by the organization and the size. So appreciate that or continue.
All in better play on. Okay, thank you. And Denise. Welcome back.
All right, I have a little presentation that is going to go with what I have to share. Uh, but basically I'm really excited I get to share with you the results from our summer reading club this year. So, um, so adventure awaits was our theme uh, for both parts. And it went from June first through August thirty first, so three months of so much fun and so many families. And it was just really, really great. All right. So first I would like to introduce you to the amazing youth services staff. They are just such a joy to work with. They're so passionate about what they do and serving the kids and the teens from the community. And I'm just so proud of them. And I get curious thinking about, probably been together here, but I feel like it's been a long time. So on the left there, you'll see Kathy and Kathy is our STEM homeschool specialist. Gina is in the back there and she is our teen librarian. Um, Lauren is our early learning specialist. And then kind of in the background, you see Sumi. And even though Sumi is not officially youth services, I mean, she still is youth services because she does, she's in support services. She does all of our ordering and cataloging for um, youth books. Uh, and she's amazing. And she also does a weekly story time at Central for families and they love her and she does such a great job at it. Um, in the very back there, you'll see Mason and they are our environmental specialist. And then Rema Lisa on the far right there is our art specialist. So we're really lucky to have such an awesome team who gets to travel to all our branches and share their their specialties and what they love. Um, I unfortunately Skylar was not with us the day we took this picture. But Skylar is, I don't know what you would do without Skylar. Skylar is part of youth services, even though she's marketing and communications manager, I understand. But but we just, we love Skylar. Skylar is just, she helps us with everything. She has made my year, uh, my first year here at Spokane very easy because she's helped me with so much and we just appreciate her so much. So, um, there's Skylar. And then Winn is on that right corner and Winn um, is a page at Shadle, but she actually did our baby story time every week. At Shadle and she is so passionate about the babies and she loves doing it and we just appreciate her, even though she's not officially services. Um, I wanted to acknowledge her and recognize her for all the work she does every week throughout the year. Okay, so here is a comparison from last year to this year in our attendance at each of our branches. Um, as you can see, there's been a really large increase in all of the branches. Um, but notably uh, Shadle went from three hundred eighty eight last year to one thousand one hundred forty five participants this year. And South Hill went from three hundred sixty two to one thousand two. Uh, but everybody, you know, there's a significant increase and we're just so excited to see that.
This is increased in summer reading participants?
Yes, yes. So here it is broken down. So we have our registrations. Um, last year in twenty twenty three, we had um, one thousand three hundred eight registrations. And this year we had three hundred seven, three thousand seven hundred sixty eight registration. Um, a lot of times when you see all of these people register, not, they don't always come back and they don't always be, they're not always active readers. So um, as you can see, the active readers were like, woo. So last year out of that one thousand three hundred eight um, that registered, only eight hundred were active readers. This year it was so close because we had that thirty seven hundred registrations, but then this year we had thirty two hundred fifteen active readers. So that means they were being engaged and and continuing to interact for all the months. And that is, that's really exciting to see. Um, rewards redeemed. Last year, um, it's very different formats that we use. So last year, um, everybody received a book for participating in the reading club. This year we did different prizes each month um, to kind of keep that motivation going throughout the summer. So last year there were one hundred thirty four prizes redeemed. And then this year we had three thousand two hundred forty six prizes redeemed. Granted, that's three months of prizes, but still that is a significant increase. So that's really great. Um, it's great to encourage that literacy, especially for our reluctant readers. We really want them to come into the library and keep reading all summer. Great. So here it is broken down by age and grade. So um, as you can see, you know, zero through four, our little babies through preschool. It went up from two hundred five to five hundred fifty eight. Our K through fifth graders went from six hundred forty seven participants to one thousand three hundred forty nine. And our teens are sixth through twelfth graders. So I think a lot of times it's really hard to get them in the summer. They're so busy, friends, camps, work, whatever they're doing. Um, take that video. So last year was two hundred seventeen and this year was five hundred sixty three, which is super exciting. Now our adults, apparently prizes work for adults too. So last year we had two hundred thirty nine adults that um, were reading. And this year uh, we had one thousand two hundred fifty two. So yay for cool prizes. And I mean, we, you know, work is at heart and we like reading. So that was really fun to see. So last year we actually calculated um, the minutes that were read. So it was slightly different in the way we did it this year. Uh, this year we went with days read because we really wanted to encourage those reluctant readers again. You know, if they wanted to read five minutes a day or if they want to read five hours a day, like if they just make their own goals. Um, so in twenty twenty three, as you can see, that's amazing. That's a lot of minutes read. And I, I can't really compare them totally, but if I divide that by, say, thirty minutes a day, then that would be twenty thousand ish uh, days that were read. So as you can see, there were a hundred and nine thousand two hundred forty three days read this year. So um, yeah, I know that's not exactly, you know, you can't compare it, but really exciting. So I think we'll be sticking with the days. I think it went really well. All right, here are our wonderful, wonderful sponsors that provided the prizes for children and teens. Um, they were just so, so grateful. Of course, the friends, they're amazing and they gave us all our books. Um, and then we have really cool prizes from these other wonderful organizations and businesses um, that gave us, you know, free tickets, free food, um, free experiences. So we really are excited to share those with families when they come get their prizes. And here are our wonderful adult uh, sponsors that sponsored the prizes for adults. Um, a lot of these were big raffle prizes that we just got to draw yesterday. Um, so they were notified, they get to pick up their big prizes. And um, a lot of these, you know, they got them in June and July. I think everybody would get prizes. So um, these are some really cool things like tattoos and Spokane Comedy Club. I, I think it really encouraged a lot of adults to participate.
Did your team prepare you all? Yes, that's up. Definitely, yeah.
It was fun. Yeah, it was a lot.
So I just wanted to share about um, how some of our programs went this summer. So these are our special events. Um, so we had a lot of presenters that came in this year and partners that we've worked with. Um, so those are some of the numbers, notably the Rockin' Reptiles. We did it every single branch, including the Hive. And we did, we had four hundred seventy one people that came to all of those. And then like Jason talked about Cedar, uh, the county fair, their connection with the farm, that they're the owners of Cedar and Bo, the goat. Um, so they brought them and it was a huge success. We were not expecting that many people. Uh, we had two sessions. They, they read the story about Cedar's life. Um, and then we had crafts and they just got to hang out with a full Highland cow and a goat. So five hundred, over five hundred people. It was really great. Uh, and then uh, right here in productions, he came from Oregon and he's an amazing puppeteer and musician and he drew in two hundred seventy nine people. So, but all of those were really, really fun events and we're really happy that they all were excited to to visit Spokane and hang out with us. All right, we have our story times, all of the youth services, they do story times. But I did want to highlight how many people they actually served just June through August. So baby story time, um, five hundred and nine. I do want to give big props to Winn because we, during the summer, we didn't have a Liberty Park baby time. So that is the only baby time we had during the summer and Winn alone did five hundred people. So that was, that was pretty cool. Um, family story time, seven hundred, uh, toddler, nine seventy two, preschool story time, one thousand one hundred forty seven. So lots, lots of people, lots of families still coming in the summer, which we love to see. I did want to highlight two special kinds of story times that we did for the summer. Um, Ms. Lauren is our early learning specialist and she planned these and she did an amazing job at it. So story times in the park, um, Lauren went to Hayes and Comstock parks and it was a really big success. And she saw eight hundred and nine people um, during the summer at those parks. And then she did Phantom Story Times, Bluey, Daniel Tiger and Paw Patrol, and she had six hundred sixty seven. Um, Paw Patrol had a couple hundred at each of those. Um, and she also partnered with this wonderful organization. I'm so sorry, I don't know their names, but they brought service dogs for the Paw Patrol events so that families could um, engage in and get to know them. So that was really a great addition. And then our specialty programs by our awesome um, three specialists. So um, art and environment and science. So that first picture is a picture of Rema Lisa's mural program, um, art murals that families could uh, design awesome art on some of the windows in our branches. And then Mason's in the middle there planting with some kiddos. And Kathy is doing space trivia at Space Olympics. So we had nine hundred twenty four participants in all of their programs that they did this. And then lastly, we have our teen programs. So Gina, our teen librarian, she does all of these. Um, she is so good with the teens and she understands how important these are and impacting how the teens relate to each other. It's mostly for social, you know, time. Um, but she did her escape rooms, which were really fun. That is that first picture on the left there. Dungeons and Dragons goes year round, but Dungeons and Dragons only can take about six to ten people playing a game at a time. So a hundred eighty eight that came during the summer is quite remarkable. And it's made such a difference in so many of those kids' lives to play that and to get to know each other. Nerf battles, those were fun. That's that picture in the middle there, um, something really awesome about running around Central after hours in the dark and, you know, with loud music and shoot bullets. It's great. Not real bullets, Nerf bullets. Let's get that straight. Okay, teen concert was so much fun. Oh my goodness, we had two um, high, just barely high school. These kids were so talented. I didn't know, I thought they were already in high school. They were eighth graders, like they could just finish eighth grade. And I think they're going to be famous. So you can see in this picture, um, the excuses. And then we had a group of four girls that they're divine, is their name? I'm telling you, I cried during the concert. I was like, you're talking about kids. But they're just super talented and seeing the crowd react to them, it was just really cool. So I hope we can do that again. Anyway, so this program, do you have any questions for me about summer or youth services in general?
This was so cool. I, I I, I'm in awe of everything that you were able to get done. More importantly, I think it's, it shows that no matter what the age range or the skill level, there's always room for somebody.
Totally.
So, thank you for, for making that happen. Good stuff.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's see. Public comment. So on our next regular.
We do.
I get scammed for public comment. Uh, one of Jason's programs he had here last, I don't know, last month or so on that was on apples in Washington. I don't know if you saw that one. Uh, they started out with uh, apples starting in Washington at Fort Vancouver on that originally on that. And they eventually moved into Eastern Washington into the uh, Yakima and uh, Wenatchee area on that. And they, towards the end, they listed all the, a whole bunch of apples that they've um, uh, grow in the state of Washington. And toward the last one was winter banana. Have anybody ever seen a winter banana? Anybody ever heard? It's actually one of my father's, father's favorite, favorite apples on that. Now, he had a brother that had a, an orchard of cashmere on that. And so I know a little bit about it on that. When, when they did the orchard back then, at the end of pretty much each row, there was a winter banana tree. The reason was, is they would cross pollinate with all the other apples. The reason was, is they would cross pollinate with all the other apples and make the, all the apples grow much better. So anyway, my uncle died years ago on that slice of planet, a winter banana. And so these are winter.
Was that the Kennedy Washington program?
Yeah.
On that. And so they aren't, they aren't super green. They turn more bright yellow when they get ripe on that, although they have the red blush because of the sun on that. But uh, anyway, they, that's the reason they do it on that. I don't know if they still do today do it, but back then, like I said, at the end of each row is a winter banana apple tree.
Thank you.
I got a lot more on this.
Our uh next meeting is October fifteenth. We will be at Indian Trail Indian event. So as we say back home, don't meet me there, beat me. Uh, thank you very much for this afternoon, this evening. And I feel forward to seeing all of you at our next event.